Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the event.
And you heard Mr. Denfeld talk about the fact that we're handling these meetings on a hybrid basis. There will be an opportunity for people to call in tonight for concerns of residents, and otherwise there was no public hearing matter this evening that they can call in for. So if there's some information that can be put on the screen for people at home, those are the numbers that you want to be mindful of and be writing down right away because community comment comes up fairly quickly. You may be tuning in on your computer in some form or fashion, and so make sure that you can communicate with us. And then you'll get on a call with an operator, and the operator will bring you to Mr. Denfeld, and Mr. Denfeld will bring you into the council meeting. So get ready for that here in relatively short order. And then, of course, we'll call on our residents that are here with us in the audience this evening that have concerns that they wish to express to the council that are not on the agenda this evening or otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing. Those are the only two areas that we say that you cannot cover in your community comments and your public comments. So let's now call the meeting to order, and I'll ask Carrie Sinning, our deputy clerk, to call the roll.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Rissler?
Here.
Mayor Hubland?
Here.
Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a form of meeting agenda that's been published for members of the council and staff and our general public. Is there anyone who wishes to modify the agenda any form or fashion on the council from a staff standpoint? All right. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
Second. Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds. The approval of the meeting agenda is published. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried. The meeting agenda is approved. And now we are back at community comment, so I'm going to get those numbers up on the screen. But in the meantime, we're going to see if there are folks with us in chambers this evening that wish to address the council on matters of concern to them. And we've got one of our residents has already stepped up to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
I live at 4311 Cordelia Circle. I'm here tonight to talk about the ongoing lack of transparency with residents. During two prior HRA meetings, over some four hours of presentations, an estimate of the property tax revenues needed to pay the interest cost on the proposed $23 million of TIF notes for the Macy's site was never shared. Therefore, at the August 20th council meeting, I asked, what is an estimate of those costs? Mr. Neal's response posted to the city's website, "It's too early in the financing process to predict a precise interest rate." Two years ago, it wasn't too early for the developer to predict an interest rate. Was it precise? No. But you can be darn sure an interest cost was calculated and shared with investors. What Mr. Neal is really saying is that it's too early for residents to be fully informed, too early to be told that interest on the Macy's TIF notes will suck up another $15 to $25 million of city property tax revenue, making this not a $23 million, but a $40 million gift of TIF. What's more, both HRA presentations noted that without public help, the Macy's project did not meet the developers' desired rate of return, but that rate of return was not specified anywhere. Therefore, I posed a second question. Is Adana's $23 million of TIF enough to close the gap? To which Mr. Neal posted to the city website, yes. Yes, Adana's TIF proposal was enough to close the gap. Yet, yes, is in glaring conflict to Mr. Neal's August 14th email to a similar question posed by member Rissler, a reply that was CC'd to the entire council. Mr. Neal's email clearly shows that Adana's $23 million does not close the gap, not even half the gap. And using the numbers from Mr. Neal's email, yet another $35 million of public subsidy would be needed. Is $35 million a precise number? No. But it's a heck of a lot closer than zero or no answer at all. No wonder the project meets the BUT4 test. Mayor, councilmembers, when will the lack of transparency and Mr. Neal's ongoing behavior of dissing residents with replies that are not replies become unacceptable? Finally, a personal thank you to member Pierce and member Rissler for asking probing thoughtful questions and voicing substantial concerns. Too often, those actions only become apparent after a public data request. Had other members of the council done the same, they too would have been called out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zickert.
Evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, you'll need that handheld.
Oh, I can put it here. That's right. Sorry, first time. First time I've written. Hi. Ladies and gentlemen of Adana City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak here today. My name is Eric Ong. I am resident on 5105 62nd Street and a member of Mennon Chinese Christian Church, also known as MNCC. Nice to meet everyone. With our congregation member behind, I am here to advocate for the approval of local Asian-American church proposal to purchase the art center and transform it into a place of worship and multicultural hub. In the last two months, we have collected about 137 signatures from fellow Adana residents. This initiative holds immense potential for our community, and I would like to highlight three key reasons why this approval is not only beneficial for the Adana community but also embracing Adana values. Transforming the art first, transforming the art center into a vibrant rally point will foster unity and inclusivity for our diverse community. Adana is home for people from various cultural backgrounds, and this proposal celebrates embracing that diversity and identity. The new use of the space will unite individuals from diverse backgrounds, foster culture exchange, and mutual understanding to serve the entire city. This initiative will strengthen the community bond and promote mutual respect and understanding. Second, MNCC has proven track of community engagement and support newcomers. Over the last 26 years, it has organized numerous impactful events and initiatives with demonstrated unwavering commitments to the Adana community. Partnering with the Christ Presbyterian Church, they share a vision of peaceful harmony amongst all its people groups. Approving this proposal recognizes their dedication and entrusts the center space to organizations that consistently brings people together and creates meaningful connections, hence enhancing the quality of life here at Adana. Third point, reassigning the art center space for MNCC will create a platform for cultural exchange and education. We will host public events, workshop programs showcasing our community's diverse cultural heritage, activities such as summer camp exhibitions, music performance, workforce preparation, and language training, where it enrich residents' lives to attract visitors, boosting our local economy. And in conclusion, approving this proposal aligns with Adana's commitment in promoting diversity and inclusion. Reaffirming its dedication to these values, the transformed location will serve as a beacon of diversity, welcome, and value everyone. Furthermore, transferring this location into a face and multicultural event hub will benefit our Adana community by foster unity, celebrating common values, and share experience with all Americans while promoting the educational changes. I urge the honorable members of City Council here to approve the proposal and support the creation of a vibrant, inclusive, thriving nexus in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you want to leave your written remarks with our clerk so we can make them part of the record?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I would ask you to hand that to her as well. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, and if you can all stay for just a little bit, I think we might be able to have our park and rec director talk about this issue. And it may have been in part because of a conversation I had with one of your church members, just, yeah, there is right there, a conversation on the west side of Roslyn Park one night that caused you to think about this site as a location for a church.
Yeah, I definitely used that.
Yeah, okay. So if you can all just stand by, we're going to go through our residents here and see if anybody's online and wants to address this in community comment, and we can talk a little bit about this issue. Okay, thank you.
David Frankel, 4510 Lakeview Drive. It came to my attention today that a couple weeks ago, there was a major drug bust at 4040 West 70th Street, fentanyl and meth. Particular apartment buildings been home to a lot of police calls since it was opened up, and there should be something on the radar in some form of community policing to talk about what's going on over there and some of the other affordable sites. It's just being ignored. Another issue that's being ignored, you know, a lot of these are quality of life issues that seem to be shoved under the carpet here. My wife was at Arden Park today, and she normally doesn't step out of line and yell at people, but after almost seeing a couple elderly women walking their dogs, almost being hit by a couple kids on their e-bikes going excessive speeds, she yelled at them. And I've seen this numerous times. I've seen kids on sidewalks going 20 miles an hour. Two weeks ago, I had a teenager play chicken with me on my bicycle, came right at me and turned at the last second. I almost had to hit him to keep him from hitting me. You might be aware, it was in the newspaper, City of Excelsior has a new ordinance that requires anybody under 18 who's riding an e-bike to wear a helmet. City of Adana should be looking at those types of things. The county, Orange County, California, has a very extensive ordinance for e-bikes that classifies bikes at different levels of speed and size. That's kind of the extreme, but nationwide, there's got to be better ordinances regulating e-bikes that just go too fast and they're too big. The other issue is some places have already started putting up speed limit signs on bike trails, 20 miles an hour, which is pretty fast, but the city of Minneapolis marks its bike trails at 10, which probably any 10-year-old can probably go 10 miles an hour. But some of these things have to be looked at for e-bikes. They're just getting too dangerous. The other issue is the bridge over here, the bridge of nowhere, the pedestrian bridge that's now being completed with rails. Evidently, in the CIP for 2026, $2.2 million has been allocated to make the Grand View parking ramp or Jerry's ramp ADA compliant. I'm not sure if that ramp is feasible to be compliant. I think it's talking about the actual, if you're shaking your head, that's what I read in the CIP. It says 2.2 for the Grand View ramp. Is that wrong? It's a city document.
We can reply next week unless the mayor wants to respond.
Yeah, it's back to what Ralph was talking about, it's transparency. I just see a document, it says Grand View Parking Ramp ADA Compliant, 2.2 million. Yeah, I'm just a resident. I don't spend a lot of time in this building cross-examining people to find out what the real issue is. And also, there was a structural test done of that Jerry's ramp I requested a month ago through the, through the city's data request process for a copy of the structural test report, and I still haven't received that. So I don't know where that's at, because that's going to play into how this ramp, if it ever is opened again, if it can be opened, if that ramp is actually usable. Thank you.
I think, Mr. Frankel, interesting you raised this issue of the speed on the e-bikes, because that's something that we're going to talk about at the end of the meeting tonight with our chief of police. If you want to stick around and listen to what the chief reports out on, it's an issue that not only you have raised tonight, but others have raised, and we're thinking about it ourselves. So we're going to be addressing that issue tonight.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
And last time I think you were here, you left early, and I think our city engineer did address some of the issues that you had raised with respect to the jury's parking ramp and why were we doing testing over there. So I'm sorry you missed that report out by him.
Well, I just asked for the report. I mean, a data request, state law, I should be able to get a copy of it.
I'm sure it's coming your way.
Well, when? I'll just make one last comment as far as the data requests. I sent an email to Hennepin County Traffic Engineering yesterday. This morning, I got a response, less than a day. I never get that quick a response from the City of Adana.
Mayor, I can just chime in. We don't have the report yet. We're waiting for the consultant to finish the report, and we'll provide it to Mr. Frankel so we know there's a data request.
Very good. Yeah, so I mean, some of these things, we can talk about, 4040 flats, I know we could...
We probably can't talk about 4040 flats.
We can tell people that there have been three evictions there.
I don't know if we can or not.
Well, I just did. Okay, so let's, let's, can we, is that it, folks? Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council? Let's go online and then we'll have, you ask your folks to stick around just a little bit.
Mayor, I don't have anyone online. If you would like to give our usual 30, 45-second break, we could, if you'd like.
While we're waiting for that, maybe we'll ask Director Vedder to come up and...
This really, this particular issue is not one that we're familiar with. We became familiar with it just a couple hours ago.
It's, yeah.
There's a lot, there are a lot of issues at play here, particularly how that land was acquired and whether we could sell it for another purpose. I think we...
Yeah, I understand all that. But Director Vedder and I had a sidebar conversation with some of the folks that were here, and I think it would be helpful then to broadly understand that nothing's happening there until at least 2027, and we just don't know what the future of it's going to be.
At least, yeah.
And I think for folks in the audience, it would be good for them to hear, because I'll set this up by saying, we had this chance encounter, just a nice conversation on the west side of Roslyn Park one night, and you had expressed that we, you know, you were looking for your own church home, that you were, I think you rent spaced on a Christ Presbyterian, and you asked me, well, what about the art center? And I think I told you, it has an uncertain future, we just don't know yet. And then we just had a quick conversation before the meeting with Director Vedder, I think, and maybe your wife, that, you know, caused Director Vedder to say that it's going to be at least 2027 before we understand anything about what could potentially happen there. And of course, it's public land, and it may be put to a public use, so we really appreciate your interest. And I don't know if you have anything else that you wanted to add from a timing standpoint. I mean, there's a lot of factors at play here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I was informed of that just prior to the meeting as well. I did give one representative my business card. I would look forward to reading the materials that were dropped off with our assistant city clerk. But we are currently still utilizing the art center. It is in use. While it's not open to the general public, we utilize it for programming now and into the future. As you know, and many members of the community know, we are working on a potential agreement with Hennepin County to be a tenant in their new library for our art center space, but that is a distant few years into the future. And as you indicated, the art center isn't just on a certain parcel, it's actually within the confines of Roslyn Park. And that would have a whole other set of requirements and research and land use portions of that site as well. Again, we also talked about during your CIP tour about doing some master planning in the area, about finding what the community exactly wants and needs. We have a new pedestrian bridge, upgrades to the arts, the aquatic center, and a number of other factors as well. So for this evening, that's all I have, is I be prepared to read their proposal and get in contact with the members. Thank you.
Thanks for that. And we understand your desire for a church home, and it was really, I think, really wonderful that you came in to talk to your city council tonight to express an interest in, if there's ever an opportunity to think, don't forget about us, you know, your group in terms of, if there's something that we ever do with that property, it doesn't have a purely public purpose. So thanks for coming tonight, and I hope to see you out walking soon, and we can continue that conversation.
Yeah, and you mentioned about...
Come on up to the podium so we can get you on the...
Yeah, you talk about, also you propose another solution, there's a land grant for 99 years, and we also interested in that too, if that's more economical way to have the use of that building. We have been waiting for 26 years. We renting CPC for 26 years, and so it's older organization in Adana, and hopefully we will be here last, longer than 99 years.
All right, well, thanks for coming tonight.
Okay, thank you for all of your support.
Yeah.
Please consider our proposal.
See you on the walking trail.
Oh, see you. Yeah, of course.
Okay.
All right.
Good night. Thanks for sticking around.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you, everybody.
And Mr. Mayor, for the record, there's still nobody, no callers, so I think it's okay to move on.
So now we've got that portion of the agenda where we go to the city manager for his response to any community comments that were made at the prior meeting, and I'll turn to Manager Neal. These comments, of course, are a follow-on to what we posted, and I think Mr. Zickert, one of our residents, referenced some of those postings, and so I'll go ahead and let you comment on comments from the prior meeting.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of council. At the recent HRA meeting, there was a reference made to, there was, or we received a question about an HRA meeting where we discussed the idea of making a $23 million TIF agreement with a developer on France Avenue. It's important to understand that that isn't, we are not saying nor would we ever recommend from a staff perspective that the city just take $23 million of publicly issued bonds and hand that over to a developer. That's not how it works. It's never how it's worked here in Adana. We issue pay-as-you-go notes, meaning that if the developer does a project that is consistent with a pre-negotiated agreement with the city, and they pay their taxes, that some of those taxes go back to pay that developer. So if they don't do the project, that qualifies under the agreement, or they don't pay their taxes, they don't get the money. And that protects the city and the taxpayers in that kind of an arrangement. And yes, there is interest-bearing, there's an interest-bearing element in this agreement. Those things are all under negotiation. The council will see those numbers, and you'll see precisely what they are, you know, before or at, or close to the time you're going to be asked to make a judgment on whether it's in the public's interest or not to approve that agreement. So you will not be asked to approve an agreement with major fiscal holes in it. So the other question about was, does the tax increment financing close the gap on what's needed to finance the development of 7235 France Avenue? Yes, we believe that ultimately what we may agree to is going to be sufficiently covered by the anticipated property taxes that will be generated by that project. Again, if the developer doesn't do the project that we've agreed to or doesn't pay taxes, there's, again, no money going back to the developer. Finally, there was another question about are crossing lights for pedestrians planned for the 50th Street, Eden Avenue, Grange Road roundabouts? Pedestrian activated flashers are not proposed to be installed at that area, just right outside of City Hall. Right now, the city installs pedestrian activated flashers per our pedestrian crossing policy, and so we would analyze that intersection, but do not believe that it would qualify. Staff will continue monitoring the pedestrian traffic that's there. It does, I think it's important to remind the public and even ourselves that it does take a while for people to get used to driving on a roundabout and then the change that we've implemented in that area. And so we do believe that the design of that will be sufficient and will be safe.
Thank you. Cause any questions or follow-on bases from council members? All right. Thank you, Manager Neal. Next is the consent agenda. There are certain items on the consent agenda. Item 6.8 has been requested for removal from the consent agenda by Councilmember Jackson, and we're going to discuss that separately. Is there anyone else on the council that wishes to remove any other item from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of item 6.8?
So moved.
Jackson moves.
Second.
Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of item 6.8, which we will handle separately. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried. The items on the consent agenda are adopted with respect to everything except 6.8, and 6.8 is a resolution entitled 2024-56, which is support from the council for a grant application for railroad crossing elimination program with the Federal Rail Administration. And Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to highlight this. I'm glad that we're applying for this. We hear a lot about the railroad crossings being unsafe, and I just wanted to ask Director Milner, sort of the timeline, expected timeline, I know federal grants sometimes take a while, but the application is going in with this resolution, and then when do you think we'll hear back?
Yeah, the application's due late September, early October. I think we'll hear back by the end of the year, and then it's about a year study for these, it's a safety review of the seven crossings we have in town.
Okay, and with the potential to eliminate the crossings?
We don't think there's a possibility. We're not really focusing on elimination, because they're all at-grade crossings. That would be major bridges and major underpasses. We're looking at safety improvements such as crossing arms, signage, lights, stuff like that, that we can make it safer, because again, it's a low-volume, low-speed rail that goes through town.
Terrific. That's very helpful. Thank you so much.
Care to move the matter?
I will move the matter. Resolution number 2024-56.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Member Pierce seconds Member Jackson's motion to adopt Resolution 2024-56. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2024-56, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried. Resolution 2024-56 is hereby adopted. And next, we are on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, and we have here... And is there, you know, we have to approve these on a majority, actually a supermajority basis when we have a donation to the city, requires a four-fifths vote to approve it. So 2024-59, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-59?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves.
Second.
Member Agnew seconds the adoption of Resolution 2024-59, which accepts donations on behalf of the City of Adana. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2024-59, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried. And at this reporting period, there was a donation from a lady from Apple Valley named Holowinski, and it is a memorial bench at Centennial Lakes Park, a $3,200 gift, and that will be posted up on the city website. So thank you, Jackie Holowinski from Apple Valley, for remembering a loved one in the city of Edina and putting a special bench in at Centennial Lakes. Now we're on the reports, beyond the reports and recommendations. This is maybe one of the fastest agendas we've ever had here at City Hall. I don't even know what to do here with this 7:30 at night. Mission correspondents, I doubt anything else has come in. I'll turn now to managers' comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got two things to talk about, both of which were sort of added late and didn't make it on the printed agenda, but I'll just give some comments on them. The first is e-bikes. We have received, and you have received, many comments from residents about e-bikes and the behavior of e-bikers. I had a chance earlier this morning to talk with our city attorney and our chief of police about what are the current regs, regulations regarding the use of e-bikes in the city. And I think they're both prepared to say a few comments about that to inform the council, perhaps, you know, what we are observing, what we can enforce right now, and what we have the, perhaps the opportunity to regulate if we, if you so choose. City attorney has got part of this, and we'll put him up first, and then the chief can come in after.
You told me we had some other cities that have been looking at this same issue.
I have, yes. Thanks, Mayor. And I'll hand off to the police chief after my comments, but I am aware that several other cities in the Twin Cities area have recently either considered or enacted helmet requirements for use of e-bikes in their cities. I don't think that's probably preempted by state law. Of course, you know, the lack of, there's state law that says motorcyclists are not required to wear a helmet. There's no, e-bikes are categorized differently from motorcycles, and there's no such state law either way on helmets on e-bikes. So I think it would be possible for cities to consider an ordinance requiring helmets, particularly for those under 18. I think that's what the other cities in the Twin Cities have considered, and some have passed. So if you want to consider action along those lines, I think you could. I'll consider, I'll continue researching that issue, and I'll look at the ordinances passed by other cities, and if you'd like me to draft a proposed ordinance for Edina, I can do that.
Is there some special type of licensure required for someone who has a bike that performs at a certain level of speed?
Mayor, I don't think there's, there are different categories of e-bikes that are categorized differently under state law, depending on how much electronic motor assist they have. I don't think that there's licensure for, required for vehicles categorized as e-bikes. The police chief might know more than that, about that than I do. I'm not aware of any licensure requirements. I am aware of helmet requirements being passed by a number of cities for those under 18.
One of the things we've heard about is kids riding those e-bikes on sidewalks, where we do permit person-powered bikes to ride to occupy that space.
Yeah.
Can we do something about that, too?
The general state statute says that e-bikes are treated similar to bicycles and can utilize all the same pathways and obey the same traffic laws that bicycles have to obey. I've now looked at whether you could regulate e-bikes and, for example, say that they can't use certain sidewalks or bike trails in Edina. I could look at that issue if you'd like, but I think there may be state law on that issue already, which says that e-bikes generally have to obey all the same traffic laws as bicycles.
Okay. Chief?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I agree with Dave's comments. Just a couple of things to add to that. Under state statute, it's a little murky because we have city ordinance and state statute that kind of sort of regulates much of what we're talking about today, but you can operate an e-bike on a shoulder of a roadway, you can operate it in a bicycle lane and in a bicycle route under state statute. You have to be 15 years or older, right? So if you're under that, you cannot operate an e-bike under those circumstances. And on the city ordinance side, there's language that talks about this sidewalk issue. So you, I think the issue is that it doesn't classify what a regular pedal bike is versus an e-bike under that ordinance, though it does allow you to ride your bike on a sidewalk, it is permitted. But there's a cap to the speed of 10 miles, no more than 10 miles per hour on a sidewalk, right? So I think that's old language, it's a little murky. Does that fit within an e-bike classification? I agree with Dave. It might require a little bit more research on what would be appropriate to take a look at and consider. Also, for us on the law enforcement side, I asked some of my officers tonight in briefing, have they seen this happening? Have they been out, you know, giving warnings and things like that? They've reported back more anecdotally that they have seen kids out there biking around on e-bikes in violation of some state statutes. So when you think about maybe obstructing traffic, not staying within the shoulder, things like that, and they've made some stops, and they've warned some kids not to do that. So that has been in some process, but like everyone else, and for law enforcement, this is relatively new for us as well. So we don't necessarily track or code it as a violation. We can do that moving forward if we get interested in doing some more research and start to understand a little bit better on the law enforcement side. Are we getting those nine-to-one calls coming in? Are we writing citations? Are we giving warnings and things like that? That's the work that we can do moving forward as well. I'm going to turn over to my colleague Chad because he also has some comments on this as well.
So I believe in the Transportation Commission's draft work plan for next year. They were going to study policies, ordinances across the nation and come back with some recommendations I would offer if that's still, if the timing works based on this conversation, but we're hoping that they would take that up and really do the initial work on reviewing all those different ordinances and policies nationwide and see what we should do here, or what they would recommend doing in Edina.
Also, Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So would we be able to regulate the speed, if we can regulate the speed, could we do it on the Nine Mile Creek Trail?
I might have to defer to the police chief or Mr. Milner on that one. I think the Three Rivers Park District probably has jurisdiction to regulate the speed limits on that trail, but I think the city could regulate speed limits on all of its city bike trails.
And I know they're having the same conversation on their trail. So this was already a discussion point for them, so we may be able to have that discussion together and come to something with Edina.
Excellent. Thank you.
Also, Member Pierce?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I, you know, I have to, just a couple of comments. This feels like we're talking, we're having a rational conversation about something that is clearly an issue. And I get a lot of times right there, our legal precedents, and I understand all of But I, you know, I sent an email, we saw a kid on an e-bike popping a wheelie down Vernon. And I don't know how old the kid was, but he was popping a wheelie down Vernon in the bike lane. And my wife and I said, you know, that was our kid, and somebody told us they saw our kid popping a wheelie on an e-bike going down Vernon. Because of the safety issue that's inappropriate, all of the, you know, all of the reasons, we talked about what we would do to our kid if we found that. And so I think there's, I think we should be, I understand enforcement, right? I get that, and legalities. And so I think that is one lane that we need to be in. But I think we also need to be talking about, is there some, and I don't know if it's awareness or what, because it's not, I just think it's, I think we're talking about this in a rational way, and I don't know that this is something that's going to give us time before something happens. Like imagine if that kid going down Vernon loses control and some car that's going 45 miles an hour hits him. And so I would encourage us to really lean into, you got two paths here, definitely have to follow the legalities, right? How can we put something in place from an ordinance perspective that we can actually enforce? Because enforcement's a big deal in this case. But are there some safety-type things that we should also be doing from an awareness perspective? And I don't know the answer to that, but it feels like we ought to be doing something in the other lane as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Thank you for those comments. I forgot that last important piece. Regardless of how we handle an ordinance, you know, research project or actually get it enacted, it takes time. And we're still in the back end of summer and the fall, and we have a really good communications team. And we already have statutory language in place and ordinance language in place. We could do some marketing right away and get some information out, because I think there's just a lot of people out there that are uninformed. It's a new issue that we're all dealing with, and that's a low-hanging fruit, something that we could easily do at this here.
Mayor, just one more comment to kind of dovetail on that. You know, I mean, operating any vehicle, including a regular bike or an e-bike, in a dangerous or negligent manner is still going to be contrary to existing state statutes. So if someone sees a child operating a bike in a way that may get the child injured or a motorist injured, I mean, the police can still respond to that right now. We don't have to have specialized e-bike laws in the city ordinance book in order for the police to respond to those types of issues.
Member Risher?
I just wanted to also note that there's other e-transportation devices, e-skateboards, scooters, and Member Pierce's comments actually made me really think we do need to think about this with a two-pronged approach, because it's one thing when I think about a really big e-bike going fast, you know, that poses a risk to other people, especially if they're on the sidewalk. But, you know, you see somebody sailing down, and we saw this on Valley View, going down Valley View Road and then up a hill on an e-skateboard, and it was really kind of cool because it just went up the hill without having to, you know, kick it up the hill. But, you know, that could be cause for concern as well, just in terms of safety for others and also the user.
I got a call the other day from a resident, actually not too far from your neighborhood, Member Risher, who said that a 12-year-old, he thought, I mean, that was his estimate of the age, 12-year-old coming on the sidewalk going over 20 miles an hour, just about hit a older person who stepped off the sidewalk to her house onto the sidewalk that runs parallel to the street and just about cauter, you know? And so to Member Pierce's point, I feel like there's some immediacy to some aspects of this that we ought to be able to deal with while the Edina Transportation Commission looks at best practices around the country, but the idea of making them wear a helmet and some of those other things, I don't see why we wouldn't do something about that. And with changing climate and it staying nicer longer, typically in years gone by, you'd say, well, it's going to snow in a month, you know, and they won't be running around, but who knows? So I do feel like there's some immediacy to some aspect of these things. Helmets especially, I guess, would be an easy thing to deal with. So I don't know, how do we deal with that?
Well, we can, I think what we're getting from you is some interest in moving this ahead, moving this ahead expeditiously, so we can do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And you had one other?
I did. And this pertains to the on and off, the reliability issues of our community's electric grid. We've had a number of complaints and concerns about that expressed to both staff and council. I had an opportunity this week to touch base with a contact that I have at the Public Utilities Commission. She told me that her office that she operates, which is called the Consumer Affairs Office, is the correct person, is the correct body within state government, specifically the PUC, to address, formally address, comments about Excel's performance directly to her. There is currently, right now, a filing period that closes on September 12th, where if people have complaints, they could get them into her office and they'll be considered through the, they'll be researched, for example, but they will be considered by the PUC in that filing process. Her name is Ann Tom. She's a supervisor with the Consumer Affairs Office. We will put some attention, we'll give some attention to putting her name and her contact information up on our website and some other, and some other public information strategies to get that out there as fast as we can. We can also issue a, I'm planning to issue a comment on behalf of city government to her directly as well. But if residents want to contact her, they certainly can, and we'll make sure they have the name and the contact information to do that sometime, sometimes starting tomorrow.
Good, good for them. Yep. All right. Councilmember comments. Member Agnew, you want to lead us off?
So I also received, I think this is kind of on the heels of what Manager Neal was speaking about, we've gotten a lot of emails after the storms, and I think the uptick in storms and the severe weather that we had this year, and got a query about how we used to offer city-operated brush disposal. Spoke to Scott a little bit about this. We don't anymore, and it seems like the site had some logistical issues and probably some things that we'd need to figure out as a city if we wanted to resume that type of service. So I just would, I think it'd be interesting to explore if there are other sites around the city that we could offer that. I know that a lot of other cities do it. I don't know if this is something that should go to a commission or what the right way to deal with it is, but I do think that that is a good service that I'd like for us to offer, members of our community. Next, so on last week, as commissioners for the HRA, we got another update on the possibility of having an underpass on France between 7250, 7201, the east and the west side of France, let's say. And I kind of left not really exactly sure what the next steps were. I know, like, we were doing this, like, phase of the project, and knowing that we're within the next short amount of time, within the next couple of months, going to be reviewing that project again, I'm sure we'll get another revisit from the Macy's Furniture Site again. I think we need to continue pushing it forward, and I'd like to see it progress. And so for this one, I don't know if the right next step is to ask staff to prepare a resolution so that we, as a council, can, like, have that conversation then and decide on next steps. But I think that would be my direct ask, is let's push it forward and let's discuss it formally as a council to make a decision that if we want to move forward with that, that we're taking those right next steps so that we can ideally get the timing to work out with all of those projects, so that we don't have one project pursuing something and having to waste some investment. As much as we can get those to align, I think the better. So that would be my ask.
Thank you for those comments. Member Pierce?
Nothing from me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we, as a city council, received notice from the Met Council that their population estimates through 2050 have been published, and there's a comment period right now. The population estimates are unrealistic in my mind, and I wanted to put forward that I'd like to know what the process is for us as a city to comment on these population estimates and see if we can't get them pushed down to something more realistic. They're pretty high. But I would like to, in the comment period, have us as a city make some formal comments.
Great.
Thank you.
We'll do that. Member Risher?
This is sobering news. In this year, we've had 288 traffic fatalities in the state of Minnesota. Last year, we were around 238, so about 50 fatalities over where we were last year. We are going in the wrong direction. And this Sunday was a horrific crash at Park Tavern in St. Louis Park. And I just want to say our hearts go out to the family and the loved ones of Christina Folkerts, who was killed, along with Gabe Harvey. Also injured were three employees of Methodist Hospital, Lorik Knudsen, Tegan Dalbani, and Theo Larson. And I just want to say we're really thinking about all of them, all of their families, all of their friends. And, you know, driving is a serious thing. You got to be sober when you get behind the wheel. So this didn't need to happen.
Thank you, Member Risher. I want to segue off a couple of things other folks have said, and Manager Neal as well. I was really disappointed in the performance of Excel Energy in terms of being able to get people back up and operating with, on the electrical grid. You know, it wasn't that many months ago where they had another episode somewhere in the state where they had to bring in several hundred people to try to make things work. And now they brought in, I think, 700 people from around the country, and it just seems that if this, if this new climate that we're operating in, they better figure out a way to be more resilient. And I know in our neighborhood, the first time the wind blows over 40 miles an hour, the power goes out. It's just like automatic. And so I think this is a conversation that is- And so I think this is a conversation that is... It's time to hold it, and time to be thinking about how to improve the resilience of our state through our quasi-monopoly public utility provider, Excel Energy. I really like what Member Agnew had to say about the pickup of the brush. Now, talking to Director Vedder about this. We'd probably have to get some more equipment and figure out how we're going to do this. But I do think it's a great service. I mean, it's just one of those wonderful things about living in a city. And so I'd like to, I'd like to think more about that. You know, people bring their things to the berm or the curb, and then we figure out a way we're going to get it picked up, just like Minneapolis does every year with leaves. You know, they've got a, they've got a, they got the equipment and the system in place to do all that work. Interesting on the Excel thing, after three days of being without power, people, I had a woman call me who said she wasn't blaming the city because she knew we weren't a utility operator. But she said, you know, when the city sees this happening for an extended number of days like that... And there's just a touch of humor in here, but also a bit of seriousness. She said, you know, we couldn't find ice anywhere. She said, I think the city should be in the ice business. And that we should be thinking about how we're going to get, how we're going to help out, you know? And so it's another one of those services that you provide your constituents for... And I don't know if, I don't know if we want to get any ice business or have a big ice cooler out at, out at Public Works where we load it up and go through the neighborhood like a ice cream truck, you know? But anyway.
Yeah, we got an email that, we got an email that used the term "ice block", which I haven't heard since talking about Antiques as a little girl. It's like, where's the iceman with the ice block?
Manager Neil wrote a dissertation on that one time, he told me.
Not a dissertation, but a major collegiate project on municipal ice utilities, which were a thing in the latter half of the 19th century.
And then a couple other little things. Yeah, that book went to, a few weeks ago, to a celebration of life ceremony for Brian Chang. And this is a book that he wrote. He lived in Edina for many, many years. But it's just a fabulous story of a young guy growing up in Mao's China in a collective, barely able to get by with his parents, loving parents, and teaching himself English. And then ended up being an interpreter. And then at a business meeting between Chinese executives and a fellow who became the eventual CEO of International Multifoods named Andre Gillet, who was here for years. He was working with Brian on this translation, and he helped him get to the United States to go to college at the University of Minnesota. And he was just such a grateful, happy person to have had these opportunities, as he says right on the cover of the book, and the successes that he had in the United States. First, I think, in financial services, then decided he was too entrepreneurial and ended up going back and forth to China a great deal. And at one time, he wanted us to have a sister-city relationship with a city that was close to his heart in China. Well, it was like us at 50,000 and this city at, like, 8 million, you know? Didn't really fit that well. So nothing ever happened on that. But his wife Renee had a wonderful ceremony for him and over at the centrum. And his two daughters were there, lovely young women. And so our condolences to the Brian Chang family. And then just one other piece to put up that just pertains to something Member Jackson was talking about. Somebody, I guess my wife noticed it on Nextdoor, that one of our residents was questioning why I was spending taxpayer money going to the leadership meeting at the U.S. Conference of Mayors. And what good did that do Edina? And so I just point people out, just by serendipity, to items 6.8 and 6.9 on our consent agenda this evening. And I will tell you that without being involved beyond Edina or in the region, or in the state, or as I am with the U.S. Conference of Mayors on the Transportation Committee, the U.S. Conference of Mayors had a tremendous amount of influence on the IIJA Act and also with respect to the IRA. And so, and another good example of it is this grant application we're going for with respect to railroad crossing elimination programs. That is possible to apply for that grant because of the things that cities and city organizations like our city council, how we were able to influence Congress to a significant degree on some of this major legislation that's passed under the Biden administration. So when I take two days off of work to go to some of these things, and I know it's an expense for the taxpayers, but there are potential benefits there because we then get to be in the competitive bidding process to try to get some of these things. This map I happened to have Scott to put up deals with all the recipients that have gotten the first round of money for redoing their, or putting, installing the EV systems. So I'm thinking that that's something that we ought to be thinking about on this next go-around. There's a half a billion dollars in this fund, and this is the first go-around. The first two awards in Minnesota, you can see where we had two of them here. One was to Mendat, and I think one was to Hennepin County. But in many of these states, it's some of the major cities that are getting really significant financial support for building out their EV network. And so I would encourage us to be thinking about that, too. And that opportunity exists because of the work that local government does on a federal level. So I hope that helps people understand why we do the things that we do as local government officials, whether it's going to the National League of Cities meetings or to the U.S. Conference of Mayors meetings, to try to create opportunity for our cities to grow and prosper. That's it for me, I think. Let me look at my little list here one more time. E-bikes are on my list, too, so... And I think that's it for me. Did that cause anybody else to think of anything else they wanted to raise? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved. Second?
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds that we motion to adjourn the meeting of the city council this Tuesday, September 3, 2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. We stand adjourned.